The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. Eleven present, you have form.
A quorum being present, we will be led in opening prayer and reflection by Jason Fasser Elong with Nicholas and Company Literary Arts.
Thank you, good morning. I'm gonna open up with a poem. Now I'll be quick. But upon entering this space, coming to this building, I guess adjacent to the west side of the building, there's a community of people that sleep on the street. So this poem is dedicated to those folks. It's entitled "Der Moi Loop Pantoum." Never a good sign. Folks pointing, looking around, mob forms, cars slow, they stop. Folks pointing, looking around, I leave the cafe to watch, they stop, looking at them like the others. I leave the cafe to watch among the rest of us and look at them like the others, other poets, artists, the avant-garde. Among the rest of us in tune, inspired, other poets, artists, the avant-garde, all of us aware, inspired, for all the colors of the poets, artists, the avant-garde, we all share, in tuned, we are inspired by the likeness of Chuck Berry, desiring, man on the corner of panhandles. We admire the likeness of Chuck Berry, a mob forms, cars slow, man on the corner of panhandles, never a good sign. Thank you.
We will dispense with the regular order of business to take up the special order of the day. We'll begin by taking up the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. This time, I will invite up Aldermen from the 14th for the presentation of the Resolution 141.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and members of the board, or Madam President, Madam President and members of the board. Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution?
Resolution 141, the heroes of CBPA High School Mass Shooting. Whereas founded as a magnet school in 1984 and relocated to its current location in 2004, CBPA has been educating our city's most artistic minds with honors and distinction. And whereas on October 24th, 2022, a tragic event occurred when an alumni of the high school opened fire on students and staff, killing a student, Alexandria Bell and a teacher, Jean Kuzak, while injuring seven students before being fatally shot by Captain Misty Dobins. And whereas our region has not and never will fully recover from the pain experienced on that day. Whereas due to the quick actions of the St. Louis Public Schools Safety Director, St. Louis Public Schools Safety Officers, and the St. Louis Police, and especially Captain Misty Dobins, nearly 700 lives were saved. And whereas Captain Misty Dobins displayed no worthy intellect when she used her training to locate the gunman. And whereas Captain Misty Dobins exhibited unfaltering courage when she was the first person to confront the gunman, leading to the horrible incident being resolved. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to recognize the actions of Captain Misty Dobins that led to countless lives being saved. We further direct the Clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of the proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution that it may be presented to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this 27th day of October, 2023, by the Honorable Rashine Aldridge Alderman of the 14th Ward and the following Alderpersons. Honorable Annie Switzer, 1st Ward, Honorable Joseph Varmer, 10th Ward, Honorable Michael Browning, 9th Ward, Honorable Brett and Orion, 4th Ward, Honorable Laura Keys, 11th Ward, and Honorable Shaminne Clark Hubbard, 10th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that resolution. Before starting on this resolution, the tragedy that we all are very well aware of that happened just a year ago, in three days, this past Tuesday made it a year mark. You know, a lot of times we see mass shootings, just as in this week, of what happened in Maine, and sometimes we see it from a distance, and it is always horrible to see or to watch on TV, but this one had hit home a year ago when we had a mass shooting right here in our own city, right here, in one of the probably most places that young people believe should be a safe place for them in school. Just a year ago, one of the former students who attended Central Visual Performing Arts released gunfire at this school, had roughly about 1600 rounds of ammo. And unfortunately, due to that mass shooting, we lost a teacher, we also lost a student, several students was wounded, many parents was traumatized, our own Gremendia child went to that school as well, luckily she's okay. But even though students that are okay have still mentally struggling with this, and there was a lot of people that day that saved many lives, over 700 lives could have been impacted of what happened from our police officers, from our safety officers. But I do want to give a huge shout out to Captain Misty Dobin, who was the first officer on the scene to be able to engage with the active shooter who had an AK that could have again took out many more people, but just due to all her training, and I know this issue is a little personal to her, because I know she's lived it years ago with a different mass shooting. But she stepped up to the scene and she was able to quickly use their training and skills that she learned to be able to apprehend and ultimately take down the active shooter before he took many more lives at the school. And it was due to her work and her leadership, and like I say, many other officers that was there that day, but especially her work and leadership, that stopped a situation that was already horrible from going massively worse. And as we approached this last year, or the year of the shooting, I wanted to pay my respects. I know the board has passed a resolution last year around this issue, but to bring it back up and uplift an unsung hero who saved so many lives that day, Captain Misty Dobin, and not just myself, but on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, we just want to truly thank you for being a superwoman that doesn't wear a cape, but you wear it every day when you protect our most vulnerable young babies, making sure that they're safe, that they can be in a space where they can just go to school and learn, and have somebody to also talk to. So I wanted to provide you this resolution on behalf of the Board of Aldermen. It is a very small thank you that we can give you for your tremendous work that you did that day, but we are truly honored and thank you for how you responded so quickly to be able to take down and stop a situation from executing and going even worse. So I just wanted to say thank you, and on behalf of my colleagues at the Board of Aldermen, also say thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. On behalf of St. Louis Public Schools, thank you, Madam President, and thank you all, all of the Aldermen, for what you all do and your dedication to St. Louis, because without you, we won't be able to do our jobs. I don't do this for acknowledgement or recognition, I do this because I've been doing it for so many years. I've started out at the Sheriff's Department prior to coming to the Board of Education, but it wasn't just me that day, it was many others. It was Greg Steman and I who actually, you know, were the ones who first encountered the student, the prior student, the student who actually used to go to Central, but I thank you, I'm not gonna talk long, because I don't wanna cry, I cried enough, but thank you, I thank you for all of your support, and I thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th.
I don't have a point of discussion, I just wanted to make a motion that we embank.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we embank Resolution Number 141. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is now sponsored by every member of the Board of Aldermen. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it has been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Any discussion? Aldermen from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President. Will you please add me to Resolution 142?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of honored guests, is there any introduction of honored guests? Do we not have, okay, I was gonna say, Alderwoman from the 1st.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to have the Democratic Director of the Election Board, Ben Borgmeyer, as my honored guest today. He's a good friend and so a resident of the 1st Ward.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest the League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My honored guests today are all of the breast cancer survivors. This is the end of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so I'm in the pink today, and I'm happy to see that Dave Sweeney as well is wearing pink pants. So to all of our breast cancer survivors worldwide, it's a horrible, horrible disease for anyone to have to endure, and we celebrate the survivors and their families. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Aldermen from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Today, as my honored guest, I have the resident of the mighty 14th Ward and Sheriff of the City of St. Louis, Vernon Betts, as well as Lauren Barrett from SCIU. I also have, as my honored guest today, my friends Marks McWell and Austin, I can never remember his last name, and also all our, and also my friend from KMOX, and also all our unhoused residents who are right across the street from us. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 7th.
My honored guests are the League of Women Voters, but specifically Kathleen Ferrell, who is a member of the Shimery Seven, so I wanted to make sure I gave her a shout out.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Right, approval of the minutes. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, October 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes Friday, October 20th, 2023.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 5th, that we approve the minutes from Friday, October 20th, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials found in A, B, and C of the agenda has been placed in a Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Dutch Community Improvement District. The appointment of Melissa Broccoli, the appointment of Molly Redman. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely to Cheryl O. Jones, Mayor.
You are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Madam President. I happily would like to confirm the mayor's appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement.
Second. It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we approve Mayor Jones' appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the DeBolliver Special Business District. The reappointment of Amy Grace and the reappointment of Neil Costello. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely to Cheryl O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the DeBolliver Place Special District.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve Amy Grace and Neil Costello to the DeBolliver Place Special Business District.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the DeBolliver Place Special Business District. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? We can dispense with line items 8, 9, 10, 11. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 144, sponsored by Alderman Orion, ordinance to amend firefighter's retirement plan established by Chapter 4.19 of the City of St. Louis Revised Code by Amendment Section 4.19.050 and 4.19.060, to allow participants who have completed 30 years of service before obtaining the normal retirement age of 55 years to receive a normal retirement benefit without having those benefits actuarially reduced due to age. It will also allow grandfather members with 30 years of service to participate in a drop benefit without having the contribution actuarially reduced due to age. Board Bill 145, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, in ordinance directing the director of Streets and Sales, he homes at seven locations on the 5,000 block of Beacon pursuant to ordinance 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To public safety, Board Bill 144, and to public infrastructure, Board Bill 145. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 14. Report of special committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 15. Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 133, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute a contract for real, I'm sorry, for sale of real estate property to accept a deed to certain real property located in City Block 2710 owned by the American River Transportation Company, LLC, and to execute a deed to Arco for certain city-owned property located in City Block 2709 in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, and contain the severability clause. Board Bill 134, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, in ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis and Waco Transloading LLC for a period of 10 years for the purpose of interior receiving, processing, storing, and transloading cargo and/or warehouse or distribution center at or near 4300 South First Street with other related improvement contained in the severability clause. Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, in ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Medical Examiner's Office, including the compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leave of absence, authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number 71510, allocating certain other employees who agree with rate, and including an emergency clause. Board Bill 132, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, in ordinance authorizing the Police Commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into an executed grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Police Services, to fund the purchase of equipment and software for 911 call center upgrade appropriating funds thereof, authorizing the Police Commissioner or his designees to enter to contracts and expend the funds to the extent received containing the severability and an emergency, excuse me, severability and emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
I move that we adopt the third read, I'm sorry, the third read, final passage of board bills for perfection consent.
Perfection consent.
Perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we adopt the board bills on the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Aldermen from the 4th.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I am also supposed to be listed as a co-sponsor on 132.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we adopt the board bills on the perfection consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to adopt the board bills on the perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 16B. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 116, 131 Committee Sub, 110, 111, 112, 115, 124, 125, 123, 87, and 113.
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent. Recognize the Alder, oh, sorry, Aldermen from the 2nd, I did not see you over there. Aldermen from the 2nd, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I request Board Bill 116 placed on the informal calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
Board Bill 131 Committee Sub, 110, 111, 112, 115, 124, 125, and 123.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Now is time, I move that we adopt the final passage of board bills consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the 3rd, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Orion, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Switzer, and Alderman. In ordinance repealing Section 2.08.010 of the City's Code, which provides for the nomination of candidates for the offices of the mayor, comptroller, president of the Board of Aldermen and Aldermen at primary elections, and loo thereof enact a new Section 2.08.010 to eliminate the primary requirement where two or fewer candidates file declarations of intent pursuant to Section 2.08.050, or if two or more candidates file declarations of intent and a candidate or candidates withdraw pursuant to 2.08.400, leaving two or fewer candidates in which the cases the two candidates or candidates shall advance to the general election.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the third, or third reading and final passage of Board Bill 87.
Thank you, I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 87.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 87. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
I think we spoke in depth about this last week, so I would just be open and hopefully to still have the support of my colleagues to pass this today. I will say, I did get one question from one of my colleagues over the week, Alderman Orion, and I did speak with the Missouri Ethics Commission about your request, and they said in the event that there were only two qualified candidates, they would get that notification from our Board of Elections, which is present today, and then those candidates would file their normal reports up until the general election, they would file the regular reports we filed for that election. So hopefully that answers your question. I didn't receive any other questions, but I'm open to them today, of course.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions for the sponsor. I made my positions known when this thing was passed, starting with Proposition D and then rolling into Proposition R. Proposition D allows the two top candidates to then, to compete in a runoff general election. Now, at that point, when we put an, we had a group of people who went out to the committee and got petitions signed, one of the main things in petition for Proposition D was to allow the top two candidates to then compete in a runoff general election. Now, that would have been the time when we should have thought, wow, what happens if you only have two candidates? So we didn't do that, because this was a method that was contrived. And when I say we, I don't mean me, because I was opposed to Proposition D, especially the expedient way it was passed and then put into effect right before we filed for reelection in November. And it was done for more than, I say, last time I said it was for the mayor, that's true, but it's for other reasons too, because it was an ongoing continued scheme of things of what should happen at the Board of Aldermen, and was coming with Proposition R to say that we, the Board of Aldermen, were not morally fit people, that we violated laws at will. Many of the things in Proposition R that followed were things that were already in law. But Proposition D specifically could have addressed if we have two or more candidates. They didn't, because it was a method. It was a method that was used very effectively, in fact. It was a method that was used in 2021 in both the 5th, what is it, the 5th Ward and in the 17th Ward, where there were two candidates. One of them was Tamika Hubbard, who was the current incumbent 5th Ward Alderwoman, and she won her race by more than 60 some percent. And so the people who were running Proposition P and out there with the petition said, we want to make sure that nobody gets, to get in office and they have under 50%, that it's a, it's a group of people that want to make sure that we support a candidate who has overwhelming success. When you get over 64%, that's overwhelming success, that's way over 50. When you get over 64%, that's overwhelming success, that's way over 50. But yet, very effectively, they went out into the community and knocked doors, and they were able to beat Tamika Hubbard. And they were able to beat her with James Page, who I dearly loved as a fellow member of the Board of Aldermen, but who I told that was cheating and that was unfair, but that was a scheme, that was a method. That was a method of election. That's what they used to get rid of Tamika Hubbard. They couldn't beat her, so they used it. That was a scheme, that was a method, that was in that petition, because surely those people who wrote that petition had to come up with the idea that there were only two people. They didn't want to do it. They put it in writing and they had it voted on by the people and the will of the people. Even more egregious, if you can get more egregious than the 5th Ward, it's the 17th Ward, in which Michelle Sharad, who is a black female attorney, won by almost 500 votes over Tamika, I'm sorry, over Tina Peal. 500 votes. Yet, and they were the two candidates there, yet the group of people who had a method in mind and who put it in writing went right back out there and knocked those doors, and Tina Peal won by 14 votes. 14 votes. Now, somebody beats you by 500 votes, and then you come back and you knock the doors, and then you win by 14 votes. That was a method that was put into place. There was a reason. Now, the people who put it in place were so embarrassed that in, we had our presidential election for President Board of Aldermen, a lot of embarrassment, because people then took notice that it made no difference if you, nobody went and voted for the other candidate, and one candidate got zero, another one got 5 million, you still had to have a second election. We all knew that when they were doing it. I wrote about it. I sent it to some of the people on this committee. I wrote about it, saying this was not a good piece of legislation. And it's not a good piece of legislation now to try to say, oh, this is just a nomination for people, and we're just changing the nomination. No, we aren't. We're changing the vote of the people. Alderman from the 14th had it right, and to his credit, he was one of the people that was out there with the petition, so he is actually taking some responsibility today. Hey, we need to take it back to the will of the people. It hurts nothing, it lets people know. It hurts something to pass this, because it's a way of trying to go around what we voted on. There was no reason to believe that it was not a method. And a method is a way to get people elected. I went to look it up, so I did some research about what a method of voting means, because I just wanted to know, you know, why people thought that we have to take this back out to a vote of the people. Method is defined as a way to do things, and it could be many things. A voting method could be Democrat, Republican, it could be nonpartisan, it could be a lot of different kind of ways that you can have a voting method. There was a lot of talk when we were passing Proposition D and R about getting rid of partisan, about running on your own merits, about doing ranked choice voting, which neither one of these propositions actually did. There was a lot of misinformation put out into the community, and we've had a lot of people changing the way we vote at will and getting people that I'm really surprised at to support things that was really poorly written. And now want to come back and change it and don't want to deal with the hard fact that we put it in the charter. It is a method that is in the charter. And it might be a poor method. I call it a do-over method. I call it the Tamika Hubbard and Michelle Sharad method. I call it a scheme, a strategy, a maneuver, a tactic, a move, a plan, a ploy, a refuse, a sub-diffuse, a trick. All of those things is what Proposition D and R have done. But it was a method just the same. I want to think that there was only two candidates in another election where we're now sitting and which one candidate lost and then came back and won. That's a method that we've been using. We cannot deny that we've been doing it and now just try to say, oh, well, that was just a way to get nominated. No, it was a way to pick candidates off, to find out where your weaknesses were, and then come back and pick you off. And now they want to deny that. I am not supporting this, I do not believe that it was not a method, I do not, the way we've done things has not supported that it was just a nomination process. It was not, and you cannot make me believe that all the people who bragged about what good legislation this was, which it was not, did not anticipate that there could only be two candidates. But yet, in this petition they put out to the voters, they failed to put in there any kind of language that now they're putting in, but they don't want to go back to the voters. That is a mistake. I was not supportive of Proposition D or R, and I wrote long, long emails and notes to people about why this is a mistake. I implored our then-president to file a lawsuit, which we would have won. I talked to the Board of Election on many occasions about what's the craziness of what we're doing. I actually challenged the Board of Election at one time, because they were not going to let a former Alderman from the 28th run as a Democrat, and ended up, he did get to run as a Democrat. We have to do good legislation that is in the best interest of people. We cannot continue to be down here legislating on what I think and what I feel and what I want. It's not in the best interest of the people. If you talk to the people that I know in North St. Louis about Proposition D and R, they are surprised that they voted to get rid of partisan politics, that they no longer can vote for a Democrat or Republican, and wanted to know, well, when did that happen? Because there was a lot of misinformation. When you're passing things really fast and you're putting them into effect at the last moment, and then you don't even have time, because that thing passed like November the 10th, and we had to file like November the 23rd, there was no time to even take a breath and see if what we were doing was right. And that was intended. And that was intended because there was another ploy that happened, and I agree with them. There was a ploy in which whenever a certain people would run, there would be enough people get into the race to pull votes away, and I agree that happened. And so then, that person had no real right to win, but you just could have said you had to have over 50%. Didn't do that. Did not do that. So there was something else that was going on with it. So I was supportive of the people who were running. I'm not supportive of writing legislation for Sharon Tyus or anybody else that solely benefits one person. And then it really does erode our confidence in the electoral system and what's going on. Many, many people are leaving our city, they don't believe in the election process, they feel cheated. I talk to people all the time who like, Ms. Tyus, you represent three wards. I now represent approximately three, almost three North St. Louis wards. When I started, I had, when I first got elected, I represented three residential neighborhoods and a commercial district. And now represent 10 residential neighborhoods and two commercial districts, and it's a lot. And it's a lot when people haven't been trained how to use the system and don't know how. And so now, we're coming back and saying, this was not a method, this was just a little mistake, and now we saying you can only get nominated this way? It is not a mistake. And we are trying to backdoor something that was, that they purposely did. And now people have figured out some ways how that can work against them, because whenever you have a scheme like this or plan, a purposeful method, there's always somebody else who figures out how to go around your scheme and plan. And that's what's going on here. And we keep changing things, so people have no reliance on what has been longstanding procedures. I heard a lot of people screaming and hollering when the Supreme Court changed Roe v. Wade, and they talked about stereotyping and all the, how long Roe v. Wade had been in effect. And I actually agree. I am a supporter of choice. But down here, we have been changing things at the Board of Aldermen that make no sense, and then we do not stand up and say we made a mistake and this is, let's make this right, let's do it right. We try to do it in the quietness of denying that it was a process, there was a plan and a scheme. Because in order for it to not have been a method, you have to believe that they mistakenly thought there could never be two people run for office. Not only could there always be only two people that run for office, there often has been. It has been in most of the elections, and many times it might be just one. But in many of our elections, after this thing went into effect, there were only two people. And you had two people have to run two elections. Now they're saying, we're making that right. You don't have to run two elections, but you still have to wait to run until the general election. So that means, as an Alderperson, you still got to be running. You got to be out there running this whole time. Now you won't be able to know how the people will vote. But it used to be, you ran the election in the primary, you won, then you went about servicing your community. They gave you, if you were the incumbent, you could then go about servicing your community for the next week, next month. If you were not the incumbent, then you started to learn, because you had won, and there usually was not a Republican or independent, or if it was, it was very minimal, you could then come to the board and start learning how to be an Alderperson. It is now literally, you use up all the time running when most times it's nonsensical, and it's still not a smart thing to make it a general, but that's what, that's part of their method, scheme, plots, ploy that they put into effect. And then also, the Board of Election has very little time to get our votes together. They have, they're working really hard to get things together the way this thing is set up. So until people down here or who out in the streets carrying petitions learn how to say, this was not right, and this is what was wrong, and I admit it was wrong, and I need to correct it correctly, not try to do it a backdoor, there's always going to be a problem here. So I'm voting no. I want, I'm requesting a roll call. I did look at the Alderwoman from the 1st, she went and looked at it, and it said a method of voting. A method of voting is just not if you run in the primary or the general. A method of voting is a plethora of things, and this method of voting was a way to pick out your weaknesses and then come after you. And it was used at least three or four times. And so to now try to announce that it was not a method of voting is just false and dishonest, just like Proposition R and D has been. It's not been in the best interest of the community. I heard the Alderman from the, I think he's the 3rd, talk about, he's the only person that participates in doing, letting people know that he has a conflict or potential conflict, and the potential conflict could almost be anything.
Please state your point of order.
Relevance.
Alderwoman from the 12th, could you please stay on the topic of what's in front of us, the change to the voting method?
I'm using that, I will, I'm using that to say, to try to compare what is a method.
Alderman from the 14th.
That's what we call a point of order, we have to call.
We do. My apologies. Alderman from the 9th, please state the rule of which you have a point of order.
We have a rule against the proposition relevance, you have to stay on that.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I will yield, he's new. I don't, I won't make him have to do that.
Okay.
I will accept it as a point of order. But I also want to explain why I was bringing it up.
You may proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you, and thank you, Alderman from the 14th. I was bringing it up because all of these things are tied together. Everybody wants to, that's my whole point. You want to just try to break them down into one little thing, oh, this is just a way to nominate people. This was a continuing practice and method that went on and on and on. So when Alder from the 3rd complains about how he has to report things and how almost all of us has to do that, those were all the things that I brought up in my writings, in my emails about what was wrong with these things. And so now we want to take them apart one by one. We could do that with racism, with sexism and everything, and say, oh, we're just hiring another man. Never talk about, it might be only men in that cabinet or in that position. So I just want to finish and say that we have to be more mindful of doing good legislation. We are not doing it. I am all about fairness, even if it's against me, I'm about fairness in the rules. We have to make rules that apply to everybody. We can't continue to legislate so that we can get our way. This is not good legislation, and we're not looking good in the City of St. Louis. And if you don't believe it, look at the people voting with their feet. This should go to the body of electors that decided it in the first place, and if we didn't mean it, then we should not have put in Proposition D that one of the things is to allow the top two candidates to do a runoff in a general election. So the reason why we did that is because we anticipated it could just be two, and they would run in both a primary and a general. And it is a method, and we should change it the correct way. And I want to commend Alderman from the 14th for bringing it forth.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I won't go long, because I, you know, we had a very lengthy discussion about this last week. I do want to point out one thing that the Alderwoman from the 12th said. I know there's a back and forth, is this changing the voting method, is it not changing the voting method? I think it is changing at least a key aspect of way voting happens. By eliminating a primary, I do agree to what the spirit of the bill is doing is, if there are two members, you know, you don't need a primary, right? We say it's a waste of resources. I still beg to differ. Candidates still will be going out knocking doors from January to March, they may even still stand on poles, understanding that a lot of people would not even know that this legislation went into effect and think that they're going to vote in the March primary and then find out that their candidate isn't on the ballot. I think it doesn't really save the Board of Elections money. Again, if you have a, two automatic candidates with three candidates for president, the Board of Elections still would be spending money. They still have to set up in the ward, they still have to get poll workers, they still have to get the machines and everything set up. So it's not, I know that's been one of the things that have been said, that it may save our Board of Elections money. We do know when we have these elections, they are expensive, but it'd be nice to know how much they believe will be saved, especially when they're not sure if it's a guarantee that in each ward there won't be an election. That's not a guaranteed thing, because we never know how many people are actually going to end up filing for office. And lastly, I was a big supporter with Prop D, and I worked with Kathleen and the League of Women Voters and Integrity, I can't think of the group name, but worked very hard to make sure we got Prop D on the ballot. And the way that we went about it is we met weekly, I remember meeting right across street at the bar that is now shut down. We met weekly, trying to get community stakeholders to support this, trying to get organizations to support it, trying to go out and raise money so we can hire people to actually go out and knock doors to get it on the ballot. The way that we did it was, you know, in my opinion, I think, of course, maybe we could have did more education, but I think we did it the right way. Maybe that's why I disagree a little bit with some of my colleagues. I think we did it the right way. We tried to educate as many people as possible, but ultimately, the way that we went is we engaged the community in the process of a way that will be a change to the election, no matter if it's a method or if you're getting rid of a primary or a general election, any of that. Because with Prop D, we changed it where now both primaries are a lot more competitive and nonpartisan. Yes, I can understand how that's a changing of voting method. I'm not going to argue down the road of, is this legislation changing or not? I do believe anytime we change election systems or processes, that it should go to the vote of the people. That's what we did with Prop D, that's what we did with Prop R, and now we are saying we have the ability at the Board to do it, so let's just pass it here. Yes, we have the ability to do a lot of things, but I still don't understand what, nobody can point to me on this board, with all due respect, the people that I've talked to say why they're against it, besides just saying it's a pointless election, or why they're against letting it go to the vote of the people. I've heard, oh, I don't think the people need to vote on it, they really don't care about the elections and the March primaries. So we have the obligation at the Board to do it now. I feel like if we added that amendment to allow it go to the vote of the people, again, my ward's different from other people's ward, and some wards are a lot more disenfranchised and working to get educated on when elections are coming up, because they also have nine-to-fives, maybe have two kids, right? All our wards are different. By putting this on the ballot, I think it would have gave us an opportunity outside of the work that we're already doing to ensure that residents would have been educated. There's already going to be election, I know last week there was an argument made saying if we put it on the ballot, we'd create an election, no. It would have been on the November 2024 general election ballot, which we already will have poll workers, we'll already have an election, we'll already have a larger turnout, more people go out and turn out in that election than they actually do in automatic races. So it would have been great to actually get a bigger field when we talk about these municipal races. In some of our wards, we get like 1,200, and go out and knock as many doors as possible and try to engage people. But it would have been a great opportunity to put this on the ballot. That's my only argument, which was my amendment last week, is to put it on the ballot. I haven't heard a good reason why people were against putting something on the ballot, letting the people decide, regardless if we have the ability to do it, because anything in the past that we've done around elections, and it changed elections or the processes, they have went to the ballot of the people. I will be a no on it today, because I don't think we are going about this the right way. I do think the bill is a good I do think the bill is a good concept. I'm not saying we shouldn't eliminate the primary election. I'm not saying that. But not allowing the people to decide on it, and we just do that down at the Board, I can't agree with. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th?
Again, the Alderman from the 14th makes a good point. One of the reasons that we didn't change this ordinance at the Board when we could within a period of time is many of the people who now wanted not to go to an election wanted it to go to election. And they always talked about not having an April election, that it should be a November election, because the most voters voted. However, guess when Proposition S was run, April election? That is the thing that I'm talking about, how that we have people that speak out of both sides of their mouths, okay? I was not for either one of these propositions, but once it is the law, then we ought to follow the law. I don't think we have the right to change it at the Board of Elections. I think we're trying to backdoor it, and it is illegal. And just because we decide we can do it, just as the Board of Elections had decided that they would not let the Alderman from the 28th, the former Alderman, run as a Democrat, but he ended up doing it. I think this is something to be challenged. I didn't agree with the principle of why it was being done, but I do agree now it's a law, and we ought to follow it. And I don't believe that the Board of Aldermen has the right to change it without putting it back to the Board of, to the voters. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. We've had this discussion for a few weeks, and I've learned a lot about what happened before I previously got here. I think that this is a good change, and it makes sense, because I think it does lead to a lot of confusion. But for me, I think it is inconsistent. If you made any of these changes by putting it on the ballot the first time, then I think that you have to hold that consistently and change it again by putting the ballot on the first time. I feel very uncomfortable being someone who's elected and changing something in an election that was decided by a vote of the people, but then making an alteration not to that. But it's not that I don't think this is a good choice. I think this is a good choice, but I think that we have to have consistency in how we make decisions and make moves. And so I just wanted to make sure that I provide that context and add that to the conversation and that I understand where both folks are coming from. And I think this legislation is made to say, you know, hey, we're leaders. We can see that this is an issue. Let's address it. And I agree with that. I just think that we have to be consistent in our approach to changes.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I renew.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first that we third read and finally pass, Board Bill 87. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Con? Alderman Orion? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Valesquez? Alderwoman Sonier?
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browney? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldrich? President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Con? 10 i-votes, 4 no votes, and 1 voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass Board--
Board Bill 113, sponsored by Alderman Con. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimant and Apportement, authorizing the director of airports and the control of the city of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the banking concession agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and the U.S. Bank National Association, which is attached here too, as attachment 1, and made part here of containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the 3rd, you're recognized on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 113.
Thank you, Madam President. This was also discussed last week. Fairly straightforward lease agreement between Lambert and U.S. Bank for their ATM services out at the airport, and would ask favorable consideration from this Board.
Any further discuss-- Did you make, I don't think you made a motion.
Oh, I moved that we-- Thank you, Madam President. I moved that we adopt our third read, finally pass Board Bill 113.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 113. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Con? Alderman Orion? Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Valesquez? Alderwoman Sonier? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browney? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldrich? Aldo-- I'm sorry, President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Browney? 14 i-votes and 1 abstaining.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderman from the 3rd to third read and finally pass Board Bill 113. Report had finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill 130-- I'm sorry, 131 committee sub, 110, 111, 112, 115, 124, 125, 123, 87, and Board Bill 113.
All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session affix her signature here to ensure that these may become law. First reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 20. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoption.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 21, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 23, announcements.
Wednesday, November 1st, 2023, Public Infrastructure and Utilities. We'll have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 3:30 PM. HUDs will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 6 PM. Thursday, November 2nd, 2023, Health and Human Development will have a webinar at 9 AM. Personnel will have a webinar at 11 AM. Friday, November 3rd, 2023, full board meeting in the Kennedy Room at 10 AM. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I want to announce a public safety meeting Thursday, 2 PM, here in the Kennedy Room. Will be taking up Board Bill 93 and Board Bill 107. Also want to just wish City SC good luck during their first playoff game ever this Sunday against Kansas City. Should be a good game, 9 PM, for anyone who wants to tune in. Thanks.
Alderman from the 3rd?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to actually have my special guest today. Christina Garmendia has her parents with us, so I would like to just welcome them as our honored guests this morning. I'm sure you will have an excellent time debriefing with your daughter on the business of the Board of Aldermen, but you picked an excellent meeting to come to, because we're wrapping up about an hour into the meeting. So excellent decision-making is exemplified by your daughter as well.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 11th?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I have a number of things to announce. So there will be a meeting on Tuesday, November 7th, Cabinet and Community. That'll take place at Herbert Hoover's Boys and Girls Club at 2901 North Grand Avenue from 6 to 7:30 PM. We hope that members of the community would come out to this meeting and take advantage of some of the resources that will be available there. Also, the Board of Directors of Heat Up St. Louis and Commerce Bank honored members of the community for their great work with Heat Up and Cool Down St. Louis. And those honorees were Michael P. McMillan, Kathy Osborne, Warner Baxter, and Dr. Mahdi-- I wish I could say her name properly. I don't want to botch it up. So I call her Dr. Mahdi, so I'm gonna leave it at that. Additionally, they honored our meteorologist. And I am very grateful for the work that our meteorologists do on a regular basis to keep our city informed about what is happening with our weather. The next thing that I would like to announce is that the Ninth Annual Spooktacular, which will happen at Hyde Park tomorrow between 1 and 5 PM. This program has been put on for the last nine years by the wonderful team, which was formerly the Third Ward, Lucinda Fraser, who is the committee woman there. And the last couple of years, they've invited me to come in and co-sponsor this program with them. This is always a good time. So please gather your young people, but I also dress up too. So I like it when grown people participate in the fun. I still haven't decided what I'm gonna be this year, but I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I should have brought this up last week, but I want to give a huge shout out to our City SC team, Ameren Missouri, and also Heat Up St. Louis. Last week, we were able to pass out over 500 LED light bulbs. It was really cool. City SC has been a big community partner, and not just, you know, playing soccer but giving back. They are creating a new small soccer field in DeSoto Park over in the Carr Square neighborhood. But we distributed, like I say, over 500 LED light bulbs in the Carr Square and Hyde Park neighborhood, as well as passed out information on Heat Up St. Louis that help people with their utility assistance program. So there'll be future partnerships with both of those organizations. But I want to give a huge thank you to, again, Ameren, City SC, for bringing out two actual soccer players, which the kids were just excited when they seen them. A lot, it's crazy how many people know just about our soccer team, even our young folks. And when they seen them out there knocking doors, they were excited. And Heat Up St. Louis was a great partner in that making sure people get utility assistance. I just want to give those organizations a thank you for the work that they did in the Carr Square and Hyde Park community with myself.
I'm gonna go to folks who haven't spoken first. Alderwoman from the 7th, and then the 9th, and then I'm gonna go here, and then I'll go back to Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I want to thank all of the folks in the city who attended the committee of the hole that we had. I was so happy to see all of the turnout, and I was especially happy to see that there was voices and representation from, you know, all parts of our city, but especially the north side of city. It was a pretty diverse group of folks. So I was very happy to see that turnout and see that types of engagement and make sure we get everybody's ideas. And then I also wanted to announce, similar to Alderwoman Keys, Halloween is coming up. I too am an adult. Not only do I believe in, I will eat your candy as well. So I'm excited for that. Cherokee Halloween is coming up, and I'll be there. I have a booth, and I'll have candy for you. But if you want to give me candy, your Alderwoman is not gonna say no either. And then also, I wanted to uplift that there is a panel discussion coming up on the 31st as well that Action St. Louis is doing on tenant issues and things like that at 6 o'clock that myself, Alderman Browney, and President Green will be a part of. And that concludes my announcement.
Alderman from the 9th?
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody about the Central West End Halloween party. A very, very big party every year. Starts at 11 AM with a children's costume parade. Goes on to have children trick or treating at 12 PM. 1 PM, there's a dog costume parade. And then at 2 to 6, we've got live music. 6 PM, the street party, and 8 PM, the costume contest. It's $25 to enter, or $50 for a group. And the prizes range from $200 to $2,500 for first place. So if you're a serious costume person, this is the place to be. Looking forward to seeing you all there. And also shout out to St. Louis Young Dems, who will also be having Boo Wave at Second Chef Brewing starting at 7 PM, albeit both events. So I hope to see you all there.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 10th?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Board, I want to announce our having our regularly scheduled HUDs meeting, 11:30 AM. I'm sorry, 11 AM this Tuesday on the 31st. And we will have an update, an ARPA spending update from the mayor's administration, as well as departments will share impact stories so we can be, possibly begin the reprogramming conversations. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the-- Sorry, the 12th? He also already went, so I'm gonna go to Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you once again. I just want to-- I'm sorry, 12? Am I going? Okay, thank you so much, and I'm gonna be quick. The one thing I did fail to mention about the Heat Up St. Louis honorees is that our St. Louis treasure, Gentry Trotter, worked so hard on this event. By the time it was finished, his shirt was soaking wet. And that's the way that he works every day for this much-worthy cause of Heat Up and Cool Down St. Louis. And so I want to lift up his name today and just publicly say, "Gentry, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you are to our city and all that you do for our residents who are in need of assistance. We do appreciate you. Thank you."
Alderwoman from the 12th?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I want to first honor and thank the members of Forestry and Street Department, particularly Director of Streets, Bethany Williams, and Director of Parks Recreation and Forestry, Greg Hayes. We had an event for the-- for former Alderman Samuel Moore. We renamed the street in front of his house, the Alderman Sam L. Moore Jr. Way. And there were challenges up and down Newstead. The Forestry Department worked tirelessly to get Newstead to a point that it looked wonderful. Then Greg Hayes made sure that we had plants and flowers. And we had a little hiccup about closing the street, and Bethany Williams herself came out to make sure that it was taken care of. That's how you run a city. The Alderman's wife was just floored and happy. We had so many people come out, including the now-president of the Urban League CEO, the Urban League, Michael McMillan. We had former Alderwoman Tamika Hubbard. We had Alderwoman Keys and others. We had our state reps, state senators, Bishop Wooton. It was just a big group of people honoring Sam Moore and the way he lived his life. And also, was very thankful of how, what a good job the city had done in cleaning up Newstead. My mother always said, "Once you, you get Cs, but if you ever get an A, then you better get As continuously." Now that the Forestry Department has shown me how they can cut, I expect all my lots and tree, my streets to be cut just that way. I want trimming and cutting at the same time. The mayor's office is in here, so I know that he's gonna take that back, because they do know how to do it right, and I expect that. But as I said before, I want to thank-- I expect that. But as I said before, I want to thank Greg Hayes and Bethany Williams because they really did a good job. And I want to thank John Watson, who really got out there, and my committee people. They repainted pots. They wanted it to be a beautiful, wonderful occasion, and it was. Secondly, Sunday will be my 35th wedding anniversary. And I wanted to wish my handsome husband, who has lost 70 pounds, best wishes and a happy anniversary. I've been happy been mayor for 35 years. Oftentimes, people talk about the black family structure, and we are portrayed one way or another. And when you sit here and look at us, the black family structure is Laura Keys and James Key, intact family.
37 years.
37 years. Pam Boyd, and her husband is also my husband, many, many years. Shemene Clark Hubbard and her husband, years. And myself and Sterling, 35 years, and we dated 13 years before that. And that gives you something to work for, Alderwoman from the 7th, that there are intact black families. And Alderman from the, I'm sorry, 14th, you have so can work. I didn't mean to leave you out there, okay? Because everybody has equal rights now. So I'm looking for that invitation to your wedding too, okay? But anyway, so just wanted to celebrate that. October 29th is very special to us because not only is our wedding anniversary, but he was born on July 29th. I was born on April 29th. For one year when we got married, and we have other things that happen on the 29th, he would give me a card celebrating our anniversary. And it was, February was not the 29th, so the next year he brought it and said, just to make sure you have a full deck, here's celebrating again. And that's why I have kept that man for 48 years. I love you, Sterling Miller, and happy anniversary.
Alderman, Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. I will also try and keep my remarks brief since I neglected to actually do this the first round. St. Louis Young Dems, I think their Halloween Party is actually on Saturday at 7:30. I think you said 7:00. My invitation was for 7:30, but perhaps they don't want me there as early, which is totally understandable. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it that night, but lots of wonderful things happening in Dutch Town. Also, Saturday at 7:00 p.m. at the Neighborhood Innovations Center, Compton and Merrimack, is Dutch Town Movie Night. I believe it's the last movie night of this season. And they're playing Ghostbusters Afterlife, the newest in the Ghostbusters franchise. So if you haven't seen it, it's a really fun, awesome movie, very appropriate for the season. And then one of my favorite trunk or treats is happening on Halloween evening on Tuesday. It's at St. Anthony's parking lot on Merrimack Street. We have several hundreds of families that come through that evening, and it's always a joy to connect with neighbors and families that are, you know, partaking in candy. And then also they provide hot dogs afterwards for the kids, which is always a treat as well. I might actually take one or two myself because I enjoy hot dogs so much. But anyways, thank you all for indulging me and hope to see you around this weekend at all of the festivities.
Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President. Parches to my head and not my heart. I forgot to wish Mama Gloria Cobb a happy 70th birthday. I hope you have an amazing time, whatever celebration God has in store for you. I know the best is yet to come.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you. And again, I'm not going to be here long, but I do want to echo the sentiments of Alderwoman from the 12th Ward. Bethany Williams and the Forestry Division knocked it out of the park. They also, in between there, they came and did some great work for me over in the 11th Ward. And I am just over the moon, just happy about the work that they came and did. And to have done it so quickly is truly, truly just amazing. But I do want to ask if we will take a moment of silence for the passing of Major Mike Caruso.
Any further announcement? Any further announcements? Right, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Our members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, November 3rd, 2023, in the Kennedy Room.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adjourn until Friday, November 3rd, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Hearing Room. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourned.